Hammer. We'll call to order the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners' regular session to order July the 20th, 2021, 6:00 p.m. The first item is the invocation. Mr. Shawn Hassel is going to...
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you this evening just thanking you again for your grace and your love, Lord, that you pour out on us daily. And, Lord, as we remember our community, Lord, the loss of Jean Anderson, we remember his family. Lord, we remember firefighters and paramedics and police and neighbors and friends and many that were involved, Lord. We just lift our community up to you, Lord, and just pray that your grace will just pour out on all those that are struggling with that. And, Lord, now we just commit this time to you. Lord, we thank you for our leaders. Lord, we thank for those who you've appointed, Lord, and we just pray that you'll give them strength and wisdom and courage, Lord, to do the things that are needed and necessary. And, Lord, we just pray that everything be done and said to your glory. We thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Shawn. The next item is the pledge allegiance, and if you are able to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion that we approve the agenda?
I will make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hassel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts on any of the items listed there? Would someone like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Hassel. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kay Robinson. Or was that Dottie Robinson? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak at the public forum? Anyone signed up? Anyone that would just like, that hadn't signed up, would they like to speak? Hearing none, we'll forego those rules on that. The next item is the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm missing a microphone, so if you guys have trouble hearing me, let me know. I'll speak up. So, the first item under the county manager's report is a request to approve a resolution that would approve the emergency medical services agreement with First Health. The current contract for EMS services is set to expire until the end of August, October 1st. There's a new agreement proposed, which is in your package, that would serve to continue the, it's the same service level for an additional two years with an option for a third year. I've also included in your agenda packet some information with some analysis on the cost of the contract, as well as the call volume that we are experiencing, at least as it's dispatched from our 911 center. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on that. The contract for the first year is one point, a little over $1.7 million. Year two, I believe they, it stipulates a 7% increase in the contract to 1.8, well, $1,852,000. There are, based on my understanding of the financing of the agreement, at least the operations of the EMS service here in the county, the county provides about 50, 55% of the operating cost. We have some folks here from First Health that may be able to get into the math a little further than I can, but the county's contribution goes towards the operating cost, and as I understand it, does not contribute to the capital cost. I hope that is correct. So, the folks from First Health are here prepared to answer any questions you guys may have regarding the contract. Again, it is up for, the current contract would expire at the end of August, so if there's remaining questions following tonight, we do have one more county commissioner meeting before the expiration of the contract.
Well, I don't know who's going to speak for the county.
Hi. Is it okay?
Yeah.
Brian Canfield. My name is Brian Canfield. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm the chief operating officer at More Regional Hospital and oversee the EMS operations for our company. We've got the president of Montgomery Memorial here with us, Becky Carter, and Barry Britt is our director of our EMS services, along with Mike Ballinger, who's our chief of financial overview and management for the EMS program. You know, one of the things I just want to leave with you, and then I'll kind of let the questions drive, who we need to have kind of answer them. What we're experiencing is a high demand on paramedic requirements, and the shortage across, not only the state of North Carolina, but really across the country is significant, not unlike the nursing shortage that we're experiencing. And so, one of the things that we've been doing is we're actually bringing in EMT-level staff, and we're actually putting them through our own paramedic academy to produce paramedics, because they're just not coming out fast enough to fill the requirements. Another point of interest that you may or may not know, we have a great ability to reuse our rolling stock fleet, which is the capital, ambulances, and we remount those, and we're doing that internally at the STAR facility that our fleet team manages. We're able to put a, we're taking an old box off, rehab it, and put it on a brand-new chassis. We've got a brand-new ambulance, and we're able to do that twice according to the rules that currently exist. We've got a number that are going to have to be replaced, and the price of an old ambulance of yesteryear, brand-new, used to be around anywhere from $140,000 to $160,000. That's about $225,000 now per copy. So, one of those things that we're facing that's not unique to us, but the challenges of kind of keeping up with the pace of safe equipment, talent, filling the voids on our human capital side with the right people in the right places at the right time. So, this is one of those things that we have to live with, and we keep trying to stay as close to the break-even point to serve the citizens of Montgomery County, but we're just kind of at that point where we got to keep the pace, because we've got some shortages on staffing that we've got to kind of keep pace with. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have, and we'll field those appropriately with the right teammates that we have with us this evening.
I guess one, the first one, is the one where you said you can use those boxes for the two years, and is that a state mandate that says you can't use?
That is driven by, Barry, you can answer.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, that is driven by the warranty on the box. So, the box is warranted for 15 years, coming straight out of the factory. So, it takes us about two, we can remount it about twice, and then that box is going to go out of warranty. And structurally, we don't know if it's sound after that or not, but we have a program that just replaces it after that 15-year warranty.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that was state mandated. They send a lot of mandates down, and they don't seem to want to help fund it, and it hurts the small communities.
Great question.
And also, the state is adopting some new mandates and some new standards for whether you remount an ambulance or whether you buy a new ambulance, which, again, is going to affect the overall cost of that particular purchase. And those new mandates will go into effect later this year.
How much does it cost to remount and refurbish on a new chassis?
Well, if you take out the labor cost, you're still talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 or just a little more than $100,000. We don't know, because chassis are almost impossible to buy now with the shortage of everything else out there in the world. So, we don't know what the new chassis prices are going to be, but somewhere historically, we started out at about 80 grand, and they continually crept up just a little bit. So, now we're just over $100,000. If you add our contract labor back to that, if we actually factored in the labor for our employees to do that work, now we're getting up there in that 140 range, so that's kind of where we're at.
Certainly still less than a full-blown, brand-new one. And I think most of us, and I'll be the first one to put myself on the table, you don't really know that these are rehabbed, because they look absolutely brand-new. So, it is, they do a tremendous job of that.
So, just to clarify understanding, when we chatted about this with Mr. Magnus in our work session, the cost of ambulances are a capital expense.
Right. We bear the burden on that.
Okay, so it does not factor within our cost, obviously. It's a cost you have.
Yeah, the operating cost is really predominantly what we seek your assistance with, and a lot of that is in large part due to the staffing requirements.
Well, first of all, thank you for the services you provide for this county, because it's such a great benefit, right?
It is indeed our pleasure.
If you've ever had to depend on it, you're thankful that it's there. I would ask, just, and, you know, ignore my ignorance, because it's the first time sitting in this seat, but I know in past contracts, not necessarily this contract, because I don't know the details, but there have been times that Richmond County, which has the exact same services that we have, same amount of trucks, personnel, their cost has been quite a bit less than ours. Why? Why would that be? What would be a factor that four trucks, one supervisor, same staffing level, that their cost would be lower than Montgomery County?
Sure, I'm going to let Barry and Mike address that, but a lot of that can be factored into your geography somewhat of your county, but you guys want to take that on?
Yeah. They do, they're, it's the same size fleet, but we do about 6,000 transports a year in Richmond County. Here in Montgomery County, we do about 4,000.
Okay.
So, you're spreading a much bigger population of patients over the same volume of resources. So, you're getting more third-party payments for those, and again, a lot of those are taken, which you have to, on any transport, you have to take them. An emergency transport to the closest, most appropriate hospital, down there, it would be directly to Richmond. Up here, because of Montgomery being critical access, a lot of those services aren't available, so they have to be taken directly to Moore. So, that's, you know, your transport time are significantly higher on those transports to Moore than they would be down in Richmond County, going from a home to Richmond Memorial Hospital.
So, let me...
The cost, the cost structure itself is the same. It's just that the, you know, there's just more...
We have less transport, so we're having less third-party dollars.
Correct.
But it's costing us more, because we're traveling further distances, etc.
Well, again, you're running the same costs.
Yeah.
If you have the same, about 80% of our total operating costs are salaries and wages, fringe benefits, gas costs, and medical supplies. So, if you have the same number of people down there, you're spreading those over a 20% more volume. So, your cost per widget goes down.
Right.
And that way, because of that, then, your operating costs are spread over a bigger volume, plus you have more third-party payments.
Right.
So, as a result, the county subsidy goes down, because you're having a bigger book of third-party payments to offset some of those costs that we don't have here.
And obviously, since we transport to Moore County versus, because we can't take as much to our local hospital, gas price, you know, that factors in.
We're saying our gas prices right now, over what we had this time last year, our fleet, our gas prices for the fleet here in Montgomery has doubled
Right.
from what we had this time last year. So, we're going to end up the year close to $100,000 in gas costs, when the year before it was about $44,000.
I think we all are feeling that, and I'm part of it, right? Again, so you have to educate me.
Sure.
So, you said critical something about our hospital here. What does that mean?
It's critical access.
Tell me what that means.
They're on, Becky, I'll let Becky...
Yeah, because I don't know that, Becky, so please, I'm learning tonight, so...
Okay, I'm happy to share. Critical access hospitals are a special designation by the government that allows Medicare and Medicaid to help offset the proportionately higher cost of maintaining a hospital than a small and rural community would have. So, they cover a specific portion of the cost, and that's enlarged to help hospitals stay in business, because in rural environments, we're typically older, sicker, and poorer. So, our population of Medicare and Medicaid patients is higher, and in normal circumstances, they don't even cover the cost to provide the service. Also, in small rural communities, it's far more likely that your percentage of bad debt is going to be higher than in a more urban or suburban area. So, a critical access hospital is reimbursed on a cost-based basis by the government payers. We can have up to 25 patients in a bed at midnight. Those patients can stay up to an annual average of four days, so there's some constraints on what you are able to do, but that critical access status allows us to stay in business.
Perfect. And so, then, he stated that that causes us to have to transport more to Moore. More to Moore. So, why would that be? What causes that?
Because we are a small community and a small service area, we're not able to support two general surgeons, two obstetricians, two full-time orthopedic surgeons. So, people who come with those problems, I mean, even if we could recruit them to small communities, and that's become harder and harder. There's not enough work to keep them busy or to roof over their heads. So, our best strategy, then, is to try to share physicians in, between communities. At that point, they can't cover our emergency department, because the law requires that you be able to arrive after a call from the emergency department within 30 minutes. So, if you don't live in this county, it's going to be, in some places, living in this county, it's difficult to get there in 30 minutes. So, we don't have full-time surgeons. We don't have full-time orthopedic surgeons. We don't have full-time specialists, so if those patients who have those problems come to our emergency department, and they are common problems, then they are, in order to get the care they deserve, they have to go. Now, what we can do, and that we guarantee that we do, is meet the same standard of care to provide service for a patient who has an emergency, no matter what that is. So, if you're having a heart attack, we will give you the exact same standard of care that you will get in Pinehurst, stabilize you, and transfer you straight to a cath lab or wherever you need to go. If you're having a stroke, and we challenge ourselves to be nationally certified, provide the quality data to make sure that we do those things at the standard that our citizens deserve.
Thank you for my education. I appreciate it.
I guess that's a question I had, is the transport, an emergency transporter, is that like picking somebody up at the nursing home and taking them home, or taking them to the hospital? What, is that volume, I guess, is it...
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll have to ask you to repeat that one now.
The, like, the transport, I think y'all do, like, if somebody's at the nursing home, and they need to go home, but they can't, I guess, get in a car, or they needed to be transported with the ambulance. Is that, how different is that from an emergency, as far as, when you say transport?
Right.
It sounds like transport could be both or either one.
So, let me kind of take a step back and explain a little bit about how the franchise and EMS work. So, at the current, today, we are the only franchise provider of emergency services within Montgomery County. With that comes a responsibility for any patient that moves point-to-point within Montgomery County, we are obligated to take those calls and move that patient. Now, some meet, and we hope all meet, medical necessity, so they are what we call a billable transport. Some do not, but we still will move those patients. An inter-facility transporter, the ones like Ms. Carter was talking about, where they're going from our hospital here in Montgomery to, say, more regional hospital. Again, we are the primary transporter of those particular patients as well. Then, the third leg of that stool is the 911 calls. Obviously, some of those are emergencies, some are not emergencies. They all appear to be emergencies, not, you know, most of the time, when they come into the 911 center, folks here do an excellent job of determining whether those are true emergencies or not, and they dispatch us appropriately, whether it's lights and sirens or whether it's routine traffic. We go out, we stabilize, we either transport to the local, most appropriate facility, or to sometimes the facility of patient choice. And we try to go, our primary goal is closest, most appropriate. The second part of that is if someone receives all of their emergency, or, excuse me, all of their medical care, let's just say, in, at More Regional, sometimes it's best to take that patient to More Regional at the time, and the call volume at that moment in time is such that we go ahead and take that patient to that location, or if it happened to be upper end of Montgomery, and it's Randolph Hospital, for example. We take very few to Randolph, but let's just use that as an example. So, that's kind of how that system works. Again, point-to-point, everything is, we're obligated with that, being the only franchise holder. We can call other EMS agencies in. For example, UNC will come to Montgomery sometimes, pick up a patient, either fly it to UNC or drive it to UNC. So, other agencies can come in and take stuff out of the county. We're the only agency that can move stuff point-to-point. Now, I've confused everybody.
No, I'm not.
Do you have a lot of laws in that, people with no insurance, or people that just don't pay for that, or...
Absolutely. Mike can give you the numbers on that, but there are, that's what we call a patient pay or self-pay, and that number is fairly high. You've got your Medicare, your Medicaid, and your third-party payers, and then you have your self-pay, and we collect, is it 30 cents on the dollar?
Yeah. For Medicare and Medicaid pay, they, for every 10 patients we provide service to, seven of them have their care paid for by Medicare and Medicaid. And those are fee-scheduled based, so those only increase, their payments increase maybe a percent and a half to 2% a year. And that ends up being, right now, it's about, we collect about 31 cents on every dollar from Medicare and Medicaid. You mentioned about a self-pay. Our self-pay load right now in Montgomery County is about 14% of our total patients, and on that, we collect, I think, a total of about, in gross revenue, about $140,000, and we've collected about $3,000 on that. So, and again, ability to pay is not a criteria for us, and we have a, we have a hospital, or a system-wide charity care and indigent care program in bad debt, and anybody that's self-pay, we qualify them based on income levels, on percentage of poverty levels, and depending upon what their income is, they qualify for no payment at all, or maybe a smaller amount of payment. And then, we work with everyone to work out payment plans, and we've got people that pay us $10 a month, every month, and, but again, if they would call tomorrow, they would get care. So, indigent care is a concern, because again, it's not people that, you just, it's a non-pay, self-pay's basically a non-pay.
Right. Thank you. All are awful quiet over here on the side. Y'all have any questions?
Well, I guess you guys, you've chatted with Mr. Magnus, so you know, you know, obviously, we need the service, definitely. The cost, you know, obviously, it's going to far outpace what our revenues bring in, so we're going to have to be creative in the next couple of years to figure out, how do we make this all come together? You know, so thus, that's why we're asking so many questions, just to be educated. So, thank you, but that's going to be a big hurdle for us, not necessarily this year, but next year, it's a pretty hefty hurdle that we're going to have to figure out how. We currently, we don't know how, so that'll be something that we'll have to pass on and...
Costs in the healthcare environment continue to go up, as Mr. Canfield mentioned about our staffing. In order to retain folks and to just recruit, we had to increase pay fairly dramatically, and that's part of, you know, when we priced it, we, when we came up with the percentages, those were all considerations we had to do, and it was tough to do.
Well, I think that's every industry is feeling that right now, to have good quality, I mean, heck, you, just to get somebody to work at McDonald's nowadays, right? It's so, and think of the training and expertise that you have to have.
And with volume increasing, you know, at some point, there may be, volume may be to the point where we have to look at adding a new truck, which adds more staff, and there'll be some additional volume for billing on the side, but there will be also additional costs. So, this is one of the, and that's a good problem to have. That means the county's growing when you have more volume for healthcare services, so...
Like Mr. Dawson said, thank you for the services y'all are providing. I mean, we've heard no complaints, and that's a good thing. So, I guess if we don't pay y'all, will y'all lend us the same credit that you were talking about? You'll just continue to provide the service and let us ride?
Because we're self-pay.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, we're calling that status, self-pay.
Exactly.
Okay, that was funny.
But thank y'all. Like I say, it is challenging, and it's all the government stuff is, but thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions among us?
Yeah.
Mike, we can.
Yeah, the next item is the, I guess, the juvenile crime.
Either we need to make a motion to approve this contract or put it off for one more month.
How does everybody feel? Does everybody feel comfortable making the decision tonight? Or would you like to think about it another month?
I think we need to go ahead.
Would someone like to make a motion then, that we approve the medical service in first hand?
I will make a motion to approve the emergency medical services agreement contract.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dawson. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second's been made by Commissioner Dottie Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we did get it approved there. I was about to skip over and make you wait another one. Keep you anticipating.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all again.
Now, if y'all find some savings out there, pack it along, okay?
And we may apply for that self-pay status.
Thank you very much.
Give Frankie to draw something up.
Thank you.
So the next item is the juvenile crime prevention council appeal. Would you like to address that?
I will. Annually, the Montgomery County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we're allocated funds from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety to serve what I call at-risk or judicially involved youth. The JCPC considers requests annually, and this year, considered requests from both Montgomery County Schools and Life Connections of the Carolinas to carry out our local youth programs. The JCPC resumed the practice this year of allocating nearly all the funding to Montgomery County Schools, and particularly to their student assistance program. And the most two, during the two most recent fiscal years, if I'm getting this right, CD is here to correct me if I get this wrong. We have partially funded Life Connections, mostly because they are able to provide the restorative justice program, which was, more or less, that evolved from the Raise the Age legislation passed a few years ago, as I understand it. Montgomery County Schools is in the process or has established a restorative justice program. And thus, this year, the JCPC allocated the entire request of Montgomery County Schools, which was around $116,000, I believe. JCPC awarded that to Montgomery County School. Life Connections filed an appeal with the JCPC. They upheld their original recommendation or decision to fund Montgomery County Schools. That Life Connection subsequently appealed to me. The JCPC decision was upheld in my office, and they are exercising their ability to appeal to the Board of Commissioners regarding the JCPC allocation of $116,000-some-odd dollars to Montgomery County Schools. Obviously, my opinion was to uphold the decision of our JCPC and that the staff recommendation I would bring forward. To add some, to bathe the water just a little bit, we actually anticipate receiving $122,000-and-some-odd dollars this year from DPS. $116,000 of that is allocated, which leaves a balance of a little over $6,000 unallocated. The Board, as I understand it, can, in their discretion, allocate those funds or remand that back to the JCPC for them to make that decision. Nevertheless, I know we have representatives from Montgomery County Schools here. Terry Little and Life Connections is here as well, in case you guys have any questions specific to their program. And I'm happy to answer any questions I can, and my backup, CD, is here, as he has been on the JCPC board and staff liaison for some time now.
I have a question for you, Mr. Little. As I understand, Mr. Manus, there, we now have a program through Montgomery County Schools that's the restorative justice program that Life Connections was previously providing. How many?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, how many students are we actively serving, would you estimate?
For restorative justice or the entire program?
The entire program.
It varies. Because of COVID, everything is set back, but we are still at 36 approximately. The most we've been is 107 when COVID's not in, but because of COVID, we're around 36.
From Life Connections, is there anything that you would like to add to the foreword? You're welcome if you'd like to make a comment.
My name's Dave Buckland, and former physician assistant here in Montgomery County, and retired, and went into restorative justice. I've been working with Life Connections for about a year and a half. I'm presently, at the age of 68, gone back to school, getting my master's in restorative justice. And I am two classes short of that master's degree. And it's been fun trying to do all the technology. During COVID, we serviced 15 kids on a budget of a little less than $21,000. We met them. We also do an educational portion with sensory education and learning in a program called Edgenuity, where we work with them on computers, such as programs such as how to talk to an adult, how to talk to your parents, how to dress properly, how to control your anger, things that these kids need. Now, Montgomery County School does an excellent job with the kids that are in school. But what we're concerned about is the kids that aren't in school. And there's 15, 16-year-olds out there that have either dropped out, have gone to, been suspended, expelled, or just don't care. And that's where we see our process, is filling that void. We were very active during COVID, and we went to the houses. We wore masks. We were socially distant. We did things with the kids. We gave them games and toys, and we've given them computers. Those don't have computers that are out there. Again, we're a 501(c) organization, and it's a nonprofit. So what we see our job is, is filling that void that the schools can't fill. And our original request was for $24,000 this year. And yes, they didn't get, it's all they got is 116. But the only thing we're asking for is a portion to continue the services in this county. We've got five kids that successfully completed the restorative circle, and they're in school. One of them is doing beautifully. He's a senior. But we were able to work with him last year during COVID, during the summer, and he still calls me once a week to let me know how he's doing. And even though he's off the program now, we continue mentoring them at their houses. We have a bunch of kids down in Kander. We've had them over here in Mount Gilead. We've had them here in Troy. We've had them in Starr. We've had a couple in Bisco, and they are a success. So that's why we are asking for the Commissioners to take another look and talk with the JCPC, because we feel that we can augment what the school is doing. You know, Mr. Little's got an excellent program, and we just want to augment that and work with these kids that they can't work with.
So you keep saying they can't, so they aren't allowed to work with kids that are not in school?
They're, they haven't been, if I'm correct.
You're not correct.
Okay.
How did Life Connections get their referrals?
From Juvenile Justice, from DPS. DPS gives us referrals.
Okay. Any more questions?
Anybody got questions?
So, Mr. Little, the school system does have ability to work with kids that are not actively enrolled.
That is correct. We've had kids who are expelled. Mr. Buckland just would know this, who we work with. And all I do is I call the superintendent or whomever, tell them I have kids who have been expelled. I get that special permission, which we have before, and I bring them on campus to work with them, whether it be family disservice, whichever program they need, we bring them in. Also, we have kids who have dropped out, who I am actually working with right now. And the reason that we are doing, we are wanting the monies for restorative justice to come back to the school system is, we have these kids in our hands every day, and we have Dr. John Powell, who is a law professor at Campbell University, who started restorative justice in North Carolina, who is contracted with us, to come in and train our staffs, also to do the social circle and restorative justice with our kids and with our staff right in Montgomery County School. So we will have to charge it out to some of the company.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
When did you start your restorative justice program?
Would you like to answer that?
Yeah, questions need to come from us. That's okay.
Just wondering when the restorative justice program actually started in the schools.
Mr. Little, would you like to answer that question for us? Do you have that ability of estimate?
We are just starting the restorative justice program. This year is when we asked for the funds.
Correct.
But we had social circles throughout the school system. Dr. Powell has been here for a couple of years in some of the social circles already.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Would it be possible for these two groups to work together? I mean, like, I mean, I know he's not maybe with the school system, but it's, you know, it looks like y'all are all trying to achieve the same goal of helping, and.
We, as far as Life Connections is concerned, we'd love to work with them.
Does anyone else have any questions?
So I think we have two things, two decisions on our plate. First of all, whether we approve the appeal or if we keep with the determination of JCPC as well as what has already gone through a multiple appeal process, if we uphold that or if we overturn it. And then the next piece is the outstanding $6,000, whether we make the decision just to send it back to JCPC and allow them to make that decision, what to do with that that extra funding, correct? Is that right, what we are?
I'd like to say that I know both these gentlemen, and they are outstanding with the citizens in general and very active with the kids. I see Mr. Little all the time, everywhere, and I've known Mr. Buckland for 100 years, and he's great with kids too, so I think they both are doing a great work.
I think based on the appeal process, I would make a motion that we keep what has already been ruled on through the appeal process, so we do not overturn it. That would be, I would make a motion that we keep things the way they are.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dawson to uphold the appeal that has been already made. Does someone like to second that?
Well, I believe since we appointed the JCPC Commission to act for us, and I believe that we should uphold their decision. So I guess I'm seconding her motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Dottie Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the next item would be, what do we do with the excess funds that was left over?
You can, CD, correct me if I'm wrong. You choose to make an allocation, or what might be the easiest is remand it to the JCPC to make that determination.
I prefer doing that.
So are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion that when you say remand that additional funds to JCPC to look at.
Make those decisions.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Dottie Robinson to, I guess, return the funds or give the funds to the JPC and for them to determine how they would like for those funds to be dispersed. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hassel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you both for being here.
Thank you. And like I say, it looks to me, in my opinion, that all of you are trying to do, what's good for the kids, and that's our main goal. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
The next item is the county reports. Mr. Manus, I'm running.
I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about some of the reports listed there. But I did have one thing I would like to mention, and in fact, it's to recognize a couple of folks for their contributions to the county. Their contributions are coming to an end, at least in the current role, but I would like to acknowledge the contributions of Karen Brantley. Y'all know Karen. She's given much of her time and personal service to our Consolidated Board of Health and Human Services through our Health Advisory Board. Some of her work is visible tonight on our consent agenda with the appointment of new members to that board, and so I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the contributions of Karen Brantley to the county. And also, I'd like to acknowledge for the record the contributions of CD Krebs, and he has been very instrumental and very helpful to me in my five months here on board. And CD is retiring at the end of the week. CD is here. But I did want to acknowledge, you know, his contributions to the county and wish him well in retirement. And CD's got, he's been with the county over seven years and has a couple decades of experience in local government finance, so we wish him well in retirement. And again, thank both Karen and CD for the wonderful years of service, and I hope they can reflect and be proud of their work and the difference they've made and really the people that they are. So I'm very appreciative of their efforts and wish them well. That's all I.
And CD, don't go far away, you know. Don't go hide somewhere.
Yeah, I think you're a little too young to be retiring. I'm not sure. You don't seem to fit that bill I had in mind.
And since CD has decided to be a short timer, we had to go seek someone to fill his shoes. And his successor is here tonight, Amber Daniels, is on the same road with CD, and she's here as well, getting a lot of great information out of CD.
That's wonderful.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard. Anyone else have anything?
I don't have any questions about your reports, but I would like to say, and I think I've shared it with you guys, that I recently had the opportunity, based on the summer programs that our cooperative extension does, I got to host a session with some kids, and they're adulting, and I did entrepreneurship and time management. So it's really exciting to get to see the youth, you know, involved in all the different things. And if you read their newsletter, you'll see all the things that these kids are currently doing. But I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me that opportunity. I enjoyed it. Hope they enjoyed it as much as I did.
Very much. It was a highlight of their week.
So it was, it was nice to get to do that, so thank you. Thank you for what all your folks down there do. They do a good job.
We have great stuff.
Yeah, you do.
Thank you for the jelly too, or the jam, whichever one it was. I wasn't sure. Which one is?
In our family canning night, so we have seven families who participated. Who made that jam for you?
I hadn't tried any yet, but it's been sitting on the counter.
I did, actually, last night for the first time, and it was very tasty.
I just need to find me a biscuit maker. I can't make biscuits. I've tried. The more I make, the harder they get, so I need some training, I think. Does anyone have anything else? Well, would someone like to make a motion that we adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
A motion's been made by Commissioner Hassel. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dawson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.